Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is March 22, 2016. The time is 2:01 PM. I will now call this briefing meeting to order. First on our agenda today is bell times. Dr. Atkins and Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, board members. We bring this before you today because we are looking at a slight change to our bell time specifically as it relates to our fourth tier and our middle schools specifically. One of the things that we have done this year, it's a result of some pretty extensive data collection on the part of our middle schools. Our middle schools worked with Brian Kearls and Jean Anne Flaris, who's the executive director, and they developed a program through Castle that would actually allow folks at the middle school bus ramps to input data into a spreadsheet that we use, of course, to use to make decisions. And I have to credit, really, Mr. Morgan, a number of years ago, there was a recommendation that was made by a consultant. Transpar report was made to this board to shift the bell times of middle schools to 3:50 to do a cost savings, but in reality, it does not provide enough turnaround time for the buses. So as a result, what we've noticed when Mr. Kearls and staff started examining this data is we had significant late buses that are occurring in this particular time slot. So as a result of that, what we are doing is really recommending that we shift the bell time for middle school back to that departure at four o'clock. And I believe, you know, you have that in your, in your packet here. The PM bell time for like, let's say, Benita Springs, you know, the, this year would be, you know, 9:35 would be the arrival, 9:45 would be the bell time with a 3:50 PM ramp arrival. The bell time now is going to be four o'clock as opposed to 3:50, which is what it is this year. And again, what that will do for us for next year is, is really, I, more, a more honest reporting of when the actual bell time is. And so as a result of that, also, you're going to have buses that are arriving on campus when we would expect them and departing campus when we expect them. So it's really a reduction of the number of, of late, of late buses that you would see at the middle school level. This has been a problematic all year. I just had a, a report that was delivered to me yesterday. And just as an example, and pull a real, a good example of a third. A lot of these you see, like, like, let's look at Harnes Marsh Middle School I'm looking at, and you've got, you know, 9% arriving after, between 4:00 and 4:05, 15% between 4:05 and 4:15, 13% between 4:15 and 4:30, and looks like one bus after 4:30. Oakhamic, which is one of our more difficult ones, you've got 11% arriving between 4:00 and 4:05, 17% between 4:05 and 4:15, 14% 4:15, 4:30, and 7% after that. So, and then, so if you're looking at ones that would be arriving and meeting that 3:50 at Oakhamic, most buses are not there in time to, to run that route appropriately. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's the reason why we are proposing the bell time change that we're changing, that we are proposing. It is a significant change, and I thought briefing would be a, you know, good point. We need to bring that to you before briefing so that you can, so we can talk about it publicly. And, Mr. Morgan, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that. Again, this year, it's 9:35 to nine fif, or 3:50. Next year would be 9:45 to four o'clock, which was actually back when I was a middle school principal. That was the, the times that we used to operate, you know. And, and I will say, as a middle school principal, once we got, for the most part, we had on-time arrivals of our buses once you got through the first, you know, couple of weeks of the school year. And I remember as a principal feeling that pressure to make sure the buses were there on time for particularly every day, but assessment day was, was very, very important and almost did not ever have a difficulty with that occurring. But I will say that feedback that I received from our principals recently, that was a problem, so this, I think, will help us.
Excuse me.
Just a, a real quick question. So clarification, they still will, can start arriving at 9:35, but they won't be released from buses until just before 9:45, correct?
The, the bell time for a middle school in terms of when the, the day starts will be 9:45. So if you look at, yeah, they would be arriving at 9:35, kids would be, you know, yeah, released, moving on to campus, and then the AM bell time would be 9:45. So the, the official start of that school day would be 9:45 as opposed to what it is now, which is 9:35.
Makes more sense.
Okay, Mr. Morgan? Why don't you come up to the microphone, because it, it records it?
One of the challenges that we had when the audit people wanted us to change this, it's not just the bell time, we have to get there 20 minutes earlier for breakfast. So when you look at the 210, a tier two does a tier four. And I appreciate Dr. Atkins mentioning, I've tried, we, I wanted to do this, because the 210 bell time for the second tier, we want to have those students off the buses on the ramp at 2:20. They're elementary schools. It's hard to get them off the ramp at 2:20. So, you know, we're trying to make this more honest so that the bus is on time, but to get off that ramp at 2:20, take those students home, and then get back to that fourth tier in time for an arrival at 9:15, at 9:15, isn't real, in the afternoon, isn't, in the morning is not realistic. So we do both of these together, so there'll be a 9:45 bell, we have to be there at 9:25 for the breakfast. In the afternoon at 2:20, we have to be there at four o'clock. So the combination of both things with breakfast will make us give a real time, and then we work on the other stuff from there, and I thank you.
And as, as Mr. Toyber can recall, you know, on-time arrival of buses is, is, you know, something critically important, and when you don't put enough turnaround time in the schedule, then you're going to have, yeah, you're going to have late, late buses, and that's what we have going on right now. Not as bad as what it has been in the past, but certainly, we, we want to improve upon this performance, so.
This year has been tough. The, the airport's up over 4%. You can see the traffic flow, you hear it on TV all the time. I would say this has been my hardest march at all. I can't wait for spring training to end, and it, it has been a challenge, frustrating for our bus operators, frustrating for the principals, and it's been a very challenge this year. This will help us ensure that we get those students on time.
Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
And again, I, I know I mentioned it before, but I just want to say again, it was being able to, to have data collection done in a consistent manner across the district was very helpful, and us being able to spotlight this as a decision. I'll have to, to credit Jean Anne and the middle school principals for bringing this issue really to the forefront. But then, to prove their point, you know, Mr. Kearls went to work on a, on a application that would allow them to literally record bus-by-bus arrival on the campus, because this data is literally, can be individualized right down to the bus. And so that helps, that significantly helps us. We're looking at probably expanding that for next year and trying to make it easier. But anyway, they, you know, it's just a really good application for Castle, and just want to give him a little plug for that, Brian and, and his folks. Not that he has folks, he probably would like to have folks, but, you know. Okay, and that's all I have on that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this time, we're going to digress a little bit from the agenda. Mrs. Dozier is running late and has requested that we hold item two till she gets here. So with the indulgence of Ms. Turner and Mr. Martin and Dr. McCullers, we will proceed with exceptional student education policies and procedures. Thank you and welcome, Ms. Turner.
Not on?
We don't hear you.
No.
It says it's on, is it on now?
You go.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jackie Turner. I'm the Assistant Director for Exceptional Student Education. I'm here today to share with you our annual revisions to our district's Exceptional Student Education Special Programs and Procedures Manual. This manual is required by the Florida Department of Education and outlines information regarding our compliance activities in relation to exceptional student education, which includes programs for gifted education as well as the MTSS process. The revisions this year were necessary due to legislation that has become effective since our last revisions during the 1415 school year. Just to remind you of the formatting of this document, the Department of Education provides all of the information that's outside the text boxes. We can't alter any of that information. Those are all the legislative, the statutory, the state board rule requirements that we have to follow. The text boxes are the, is the information that the district enters into the document. The text boxes that are prefaced by a question that's in blue font are the text boxes and the information that we were required to update for this school year. The blue font in the body of the manual is information that is new, that DOE entered in reaction to the new legislation that was passed. There were minimal changes this year, which was good news for all of us. We received the document in September, we submitted our revisions in October, and last month, we received permission to bring this forward for approval. Yes?
Do you guys have it? Where is it?
It's, it's, um, right after, it's a PowerPoint, right after.
She's referencing documents that we can't.
Did you, do we have?
Giving you the background.
Okay.
I believe the document is, um, in your briefing.
Yeah, it's passed away.
In your backup. It's after the PowerPoint.
Got it. Thank you. That's what we thought.
Information?
Okay.
Got it? Okay. The first thing we were required to do was on page 17, we were required to update our restraint information for the 1415 school year. We're required by the DOE to report every restraint that happens with a student with a disability. We enter that information into a DOE database. We also have a goal to decrease the number of restraints, or the percentage of the restraints that we do every year. Unfortunately, we did have an increase from the 1314 school year to, of one-tenth of a percent in the number of restraints that we reported. And our goal to decrease the number of restraints by 5% is noted in this document as well for this school year, as well as the strategies and the activities that we will take to try to reach that goal. The next piece of information that we were required to update had to do with the multi-tiered systems of supports, the MTSS information. We updated the methods that our district uses to monitor student progress, and this starts on page 49. The tools that we use, the curriculum-based measures, all the information, the types of monitoring that we do. And then also, we had to describe how we monitor the fidelity of that student progress data gathering. We also needed to describe how we involve our parents in the MTSS process. We described that as critical. And we described methods of ensuring parent involvement and how we ensure that they understand the data and their child's performance in school. That information was provided by the Student Services Department. As a result of a class action complaint against the Florida DOE, we were required to add information on our extended school year practices. We needed to outline how we determine if a student requires extended school year. We needed to describe our training plans for how we train our teachers and our IEP team chairpersons to make those decisions, and how we ensure that they know to individualize the extended school year services to meet each student's needs. They decided to add or revise several of the timelines that we are required to meet. So in the document, in different sections, we needed to add how we ensure that we have met some of those timelines. The first one being that once a parent or a parent's representative files for due process hearing, we have 15 days to hold a resolution meeting, and we described how we would make sure that that happens. Once a problem-solving team at a school determines that a student needs to move forward for evaluation for consideration of a disability, we have 30 days to obtain parent consent for that evaluation. Once that parent consent is signed, we have 60 days to evaluate that student for consideration of a disability. And it's important to note that this is 60 days. It's 60 calendar days. It does exclude some of our extended school breaks, but it does, those 60 days include Saturdays and Sundays when DOE's counting those days. And then we have a 90-day evaluation timeline for consideration of gifted eligibility from the time that the parent signs consent. And the DOE monitors our compliance with each one of these timelines that they've given us. So we have to do an annual report to DOE to prove that, or to show that we are meeting these timelines. And that concludes the summary of the changes we had to make this year. Thank you for your attention. And do you have any questions, board members? Mrs. Morgan?
I may have missed this. Have we had an opportunity to look at the restraint information? And from last year, I assume that there were plans to improve the restraint percentages? And then what happened? Why, what was not successful? What was successful? And what does the new plan look like? Will we be, I mean, I realize that you're briefing, this is not what you're briefing, but having heard the information, I, I personally am interested in learning a little bit more.
Okay. It's something I, I'll have to go back and get for you, because I don't have it right now.
And then my other comment would be, given the fact that we've, we have struggled with this, I think it would be helpful at the end of the school year to be able to at least look back, or maybe we should just wait till the end of the school year, I don't know, but I, I'd like to hear what the other board members think.
What are you looking for?
Mr. Toyber?
I want to understand what our goal was a year ago when we looked at the restraint problem, and we didn't meet our goal. So what happened? And, uh, let's say it was supposed to go up 3% or go down 3%. Go down 3%. So are we just going to go down 3%, the same 3% again, or are we going down 6%? Because we didn't meet our goal, and so now what's our plan for the next year? So, do you understand? Okay.
Okay. Mrs. LaRiviere?
Part of, part of the problem is we're dealing with, with children and how they respond. And so some things, we, we try our darndest to have control over it, but some aspects is really hard for us to, to manage that. I do, I do think that we should always be trying to set the goal that we would decrease it. At the same time, I think we also need to make sure that there's some determination as to where the problem lies, or what may be happening with that student to cause them to be more aggressive or whatever, where they need those restraints. Are we able to identify what we can do to improve things for that child? And does that make sense?
Yes.
So, okay, maybe I misunderstood something. Is this something required by the state, or is this something we're requiring ourselves?
Required by the state is my understanding.
To reduce the number of restraints by a certain percentage.
To track it.
We set a goal for our district each year as part of the SP&amp;P revisions.
Okay, so then I guess my question, it goes back to the conversation we had this morning about.
The statute does require the setting of a goal.
Okay. So it goes back to the conversation we had this morning, you know, is our goal-setting appropriate? You know, we set a goal, what did we learn from setting this goal? Maybe it's not appropriate to, to continue to go down that path. I mean, I, I think, I don't know.
Make sure the goals are realistic.
Exactly.
Well, and if I could respond, this is one, honestly, I haven't, just have not been in, involved in this one much, so I'm learning here. But let me just speak to goals in general. You know, one of the things that, that we're trying to move away from are the, what appears to me, and a lot of others, to be kind of an arbitrary setting of a, a 3% is always, that always seems to be a number of a reduction or an increase. And instead, let's set a, a pretty aggressive goal, but also have some rationale behind it. So like, as it relates to this one, you know, you do have an increase in student population, you have an increase in, so maybe 3% decrease is, is just a, a random number. I don't know, I wasn't involved in the choosing of that, but there may be good rationale, and, and whatever it is, there should be rationale for the goal that was set, which you should understand, and should be explained to you when, when we provide you with what that goal is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Mr. Toyber?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I, I guess with all, when you talk about arbitrary goals, I, I guess what we, what I'd like to see is, you know, what, what are we trying to achieve? You know, are we trying to say that we, that all restraints are bad, and we should never restrain a child? And if that's, is that the state goal, and is that our goal? And is that what our, where the end game has to be? And then, you know, do we expect to achieve that? Or do we expect to, is it continually just a striving target that, you know, you're never going to achieve that, but you're going to continue to work at, at a, you know, incremental gains? You know, I, I guess that's the question when you're setting these type of goals, and I think that's kind of where Ms. Morgan's head was at, was, you know, what's the, you know, where are we trying to get to, and our, and how fast are we going to get there? And, and I, and I think that's, isn't that what you're looking at, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. And not only sense in a, in a achievable manner, but also in a, in a resource manner, to find out, you know, how much resources are we committing? You know, we had talked about priorities and about the things that we have, and I think we need to fiscally and prudently take a look at all of our objectives across the district and find out how much resources are we, are we, you know, so we make sure we get the best bang for the buck of the taxpayer money.
Right. And, and I, I look at this particular goal, I think some, we have a lot of variables, like student population growth, like different, different kids coming to different places. And I, I know that restraint is a last resort. Am I right, Ms. Turner?
Absolutely.
And that we are doing more PD, more professional development with regard to that, so that people understand what the process is and what the ramifications can be. And I think also with the MTSS process, we are increasing our interventions and ruling out other causes. So it, like Dr. Atkins said, that was the, one of the first words that came to my mind was setting the arbitrary goal. I think maybe more of those variables have to be taken into consideration. But I know that the Exceptional Student Education Department is doing a lot of work on this, and I, I want to appreciate them and thank the people who have had more challenging students as we increase our inclusion.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Turner? Do you have any other comments? Very much appreciate it. Okay. Now...
Do you want to move on to the DA plan?
Is that okay with you? Okay. And now we'll just go ahead and move on. Dr. Desmore, if you will, is she here?
Mm-hmm.
If you will indulge us, thank you for the DA plan. And Ms. Hayes, good afternoon. Did you want to say something?
As they're, as they're coming up to the, to the diocese, I just want to, deus, I just want to mention that I had a really, really great meeting last week with the principals, our DA principals. And we are looking forward to next year. One of their concerns was, you know, they wanted to make sure that they had the support that they had received this year from, from Ms. Hayes. So they spoke very, very eloquently about the support that she has provided to them. What we have decided to do is that, I always felt it's more compelling, more beneficial for me to have a really good connection with, with our principals. We're moving forward, we want to, we want to meet on at least a monthly basis. And the reason is that DA schools are one of our true priorities next year. When you talk about, you know, turning our district around, it starts with some of our schools that have the most challenges. And these are certainly those schools. So I'll be doing that and involving them in the decision-making process in terms of how we resource, you know, we put resources to those buildings, which is, of course, Dr. Desmore's, I know also, this is, and I won't speak for her, but I know this is a passion for her as well, in terms of, so I will speak for you. But it is something that she truly cares about. And we, when we go about doing the budget this year, we want to first focus on our schools first and we talk about literally not, it's no longer equitable funding. If we, if you need more funding at these schools, we're going to provide you more funding, more resources. So having said that, I'll turn it over to them to give you the update.
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Atkins. I appreciate having this time today. And I think that when you hear the report, you'll see that the support that Dr. Desmore and Dr. Atkins has given the schools has really made a difference for the DA schools. And let's get on and I'll tell you where we are right now. If you will look, it's on the screen, you can see that when we started off this school year, we had 12 schools in differentiated accountability. If all of you remember, we waited an awful long time for those 2014, 2015 scores. They weren't official until the beginning of February, and we had five schools that came off of the DA list for the state. So at this time, we have seven schools left in differentiated accountability. Five of those are what we call priority schools. This means that they have been in DA for three years or more. And then we have two schools, Mirror Lakes and Ray Podorf, which are focused schools, and that means that they are in their second year in differentiated accountability. These schools that are priority schools will be either planning what they will do for turnaround, or some of them have turnaround plans due. I wanted to be able to put this into context for you a little bit, so I went through school districts throughout the state and just a couple of other numbers. Our regional director had told us that our schools had done very well this year in terms of improving their scores or coming out of DA. So I wanted to give you a little comparison to other areas of the state. If we look at Manatee County and Collier County, which have approximately half the number of students that we do, both of those counties have nine schools that are in DA. We only have one school that has an F, and those districts have two to three schools each that have an F. If we look at schools that are just a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller, and I'm going to use Pasco and Pinellas, each of those have 23 schools that are in differentiated accountability. And if we go to a school system that's almost our size, but I know it has a different clientele, Pope County has 47 schools in differentiated accountability. So we were one of the few districts that actually had schools come off the list versus coming onto the list. So I hope that puts that into perspective for you just a little bit.
It does.
It's been an interesting year, as you know, with the state and with grades. Basically, what the state did this past year was they raised the level required for proficiency, but lowered the grading score as to what it took to be a C. Now, my personal take on that, and after talking to the regional director, is this scale is up for grabs. It always has been. We've seen it change time and time and time again. And I read an article online the other day that said the governor is receiving a lot of pressure to make the scale for passing grades more difficult. I don't know if we'll see that happen this year, but I, I think we will in the future. Most people, next year though, one good thing for us is that gains will be included in the school grades. So even if they raise it, that could mitigate what happens. Now, exactly how they're going to figure those gains, we have not been given as of this time. We know there will be a difference in that a two can't just stay a two. He has to move up a level that they make in the two. For instance, there could be three levels, and that student would have to move up one level within the two frame. And finally, I'm also going to talk just briefly with you today about how we did on the balanced scorecard. I love that because it's going to be consistent. Although we will be seeing changes probably by the state in how they grade and how they score, the balanced scorecard will stay the same because we're looking at students by their level, how many of those students are in each level in each school, and comparing how did this school do with those students to other schools in the different, in the district. So we'll always have a playing field that gives us a true picture. Now then, I mentioned to you about the scale, and I just wanted to show you the difference between the one we used prior to this year and the one that we're using now. And you will see that to get a C, they substantially lowered it. However, we also have to remember, and I think everyone in this state would agree with us, it's a brand-new test. And it was a significantly different test than our students have had before. And I would say a significantly more difficult test. Now, I think that as our children get used to the test, that will become less of an issue in the way that they're tested. But I just wanted you to see the comparison and where we could be going. Now then, when it comes to the balanced scorecard and we look, how did our schools do on the balanced scorecard? We have six of our schools, Bonita Springs, Ray Podorf, Edgewood, Franklin Park, Manatee, and Orange River, that exceeded what we could expect on the balanced scorecard. In other words, when we looked at those average gains for the schools around the district, these schools exceeded that. They met or they exceeded it. We also had six schools that did not meet the expectations, Tortugas, Sunshine, Mirror Lakes, Colonial, Lee High, and James Stevens. But here's an interesting factor about that list of schools. When they took that test, only one of these principals had been there. So if we look at Tortugas, Sunshine, Mirror Lakes, Colonial, and James Stevens, all of those schools, when they tested, had a principal who had been there just a few months. Those changes were made mid-year for some of them, and then some of them did not come on until this year. So really and truly, our first true look at how the school is doing will be after we see this year's scores. I know one of the things that you wanted to know was what does the state expect? And I'm going to kind of start at the back today, at the rear end of what I have up here, because I did talk with our regional director this morning. The state has once again cut the number of people who monitor or oversee DA schools. So next year, they will be involved only with the priority schools, and that's five of our schools. And I think that most of the business will happen through phone transactions because, for instance, they're going to have four people to do six school districts. And, and, you know, one of those is Dade, one of them is Palm Beach, which between the two of them, they have 100 DA schools. So to think that we would get much hands-on, I don't think would be realistic. I do think that the other piece though, certain things they will expect. I conduct walkthroughs two times a year and make notations and take those notes. I do work with the schools and with the other people here in the district on school improvement plans, a district improvement plan, reflections. I think all that paperwork-type thing will still be expected by the state, so I think we can look at that. We do have, Mrs. Ralph and I have monthly meetings with the regional director, who comes and we talk and ask our questions, that type of thing. And then we have, we will continue to have school-level requirements, such as supplying the coaches at DA schools. But through Dr. Atkins, we more than meet those requirements. We have a lot of extras that we have been able to provide our DA schools, and I think that have made a difference. I'm going to do one more. Let's see. Okay. Now then, someone asked me the other day about the lowest 300 schools. We've heard absolutely no word on that so far this year. So what I did to try to help us a little bit, if they do this, I don't know. The four schools that I have the asterisks by, Colonial, James Stevens, Ray Podorf, and Manatee, are in the bottom 10%. So since we have 1,800 schools, that means they're somewhere in the lowest 180. So we can count on them if they do lowest 300. When we get up to Franklin Parks, Mirror Lakes, and Littleton, it gets dicey for me. If you remember in the past, sometimes we've done 200, sometimes we've done 300. But of course, that's something we like to know because that's a significant amount of money in terms of increasing the school day for these, for these schools. Bus issues, all kinds of things. My suspicion would be that they would continue this. I would think so, particularly at this time with scores that have gone down. I've talked with you about this on many occasions, but just to remind you, and I thought about this afterwards, I think I ought to talk too about some things that have made a difference for the DA schools. But these things will always be a factor for the DA schools. Identification as a Title I school, we know what poverty is. And interestingly enough, poverty rate's above 90%, and I would like to take that even a step further. Many people, we, we call that by free and reduced lunch, as you know, when we talk about poverty rate. But there is a lot of difference between working poor, you know, someone can make $40,000 a year and have several children and get a free lunch, literally. But when you look at the DA schools, and we go through, in many of my schools, the great preponderance of children are actually on welfare, which is a much more extreme condition. So I did want to talk about that. The number of our students who are English language learners is absolutely a factor. The transient rate, transitivity rate of our student populations, hard-to-staff schools where people avoid schools for whatever reason, distance, neighborhood, whatever it is we want to call it, some of these schools continue to be very difficult to staff. School size or configuration, when you get up to 1,200 students in an elementary school, that's a lot to take charge of. And then teacher churn. And teacher churn is transient here for many reasons. Distances, trying to get closer to home. I was at Bonita this morning, and two of the teachers got in trouble because they were coming from Cape Coral and they had real traffic problems and were late getting to school. So, you know, that's quite a distance. So we have that factor as far as our schools go. We have young teachers that move, that get married. And then we have teachers, quite frankly, in the DA schools, some of them want a different kind of school. So that makes a difference. One thing that I didn't put in here that I would be remiss if I did not talk about because, it's because of some of the wonderful people in the audience, I think. I want all of you to think back about three years ago, when we had all the hoopla about the new reading program in the elementary schools. Remember all that turmoil? Well, let me tell you, it has been a gift in disguise. And I say that because what they did was integrate the reading and put the science and social studies into the reading. And the kids were doing nonfiction reading. And we believe that has dramatically changed the scope of what they do on testing and in those subject areas. So we're very grateful. The second thing, I would tell Ms. Fletcher this, we have all of our elementary schools having an intervention period every single day with our students, and that is done by specific standards. We monitor what standards they do and do not know, and they are sent to a group specifically for that standard. In addition, I have asked, and that was after we did some review of the state, for the elementary schools to departmentalize in fourth and fifth grade. And that was for teachers as much as it was for children, because our teachers have a massive amount to plan. And when we departmentalized and a teacher, excuse me, was doing language arts and not having to do math and science, most of them did language arts and social studies, the others did math and science, this really took down on the amount of work. And then if they worked in their PLCs and had a person that they could collaborate with, it made it that much better. And I think those are strategies that have really helped us. There are lots of other things, but I wanted to mention those. I think this is my last slide, isn't it? Okay. Now we're going to hear from Dr. Desmore on the DA's support plan, and I just want to say again, the DA schools have been well-supported. I think sometimes people here think I sound like a broken record when I come, we need to do this, we need to do that. But I do want you to know that Dr. Atkins and Dr. Desmore have been very receptive and very helpful, trying to make it an equitable learning experience for all children.
Thank you very much, Ms. Before you proceed, I think Mrs. LaRiviere has a question.
You got my ears, you got my ears going, Ms. Hayes. Did I hear correctly that you found that the departmentalization at fourth and fifth grade was beneficial?
Yes, I did. What I did was I went through the state and I reviewed the DA schools that did departmentalization versus the ones where the teacher was a self-contained teacher. And they did better. And I just tried to talk it through with my schools, and it was about, actually, it was about the planning.
Thank you so much for sharing that because a staff member at a school was giving, that clarifies information, and so we just need to make sure that all of our administrators, no one's saying that the district is saying you can't departmentalize. That would be an administrative decision.
Oh, absolutely. But we meet as a DA group, and that was the decision that we made to try. We had a couple of schools that did not want to do it this year because they had so many new teachers in their school who had no experience. And I can understand that, but they were going to move toward it next year.
All right. Thank you so much. That just, that helps me. I appreciate it.
Board members, any other questions before we proceed? Board members, any other questions before we proceed? Thank you.
All right. So when we address a support plan for some of our schools, I wanted to make clear that when we talk about a DA support plan, and that's in general what we've been calling it, but there are other schools in the group besides those that are specifically identified as DA schools, as Ms. Hayes was just referring to. So we have five schools that will probably continue to be in DA status next year, but in addition, we've also added several others to our list as well, that you see here, for a total of 16. The reason for that is that we know we want to continue to provide some additional and extra support to our schools, because even though they've made very good progress, as Ms. Hayes just outlined, we do not want to lose ground. We want to continue to support, and we want to make sure that we solidify the gains that we've seen at all of our schools. So when we talk about this DA support plan, we're really discussing these 16 schools that you see here, and we'll continue to provide those supports over the next three years and monitor progress to make sure that we are moving in the right direction.
Wait, 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 the 16?
So yes, there are 16 here on the list.
Oh, including the five DA plus the focus?
Plus the 11 focus, right, exactly.
Thank you.
All right. So as far as recruitment and retention, and what we were trying to do was address at least some of the risk factors that Ms. Hayes just went through as far as what the DA schools are facing. So one of those was in recruitment and retention, that teacher churn that she was referring to. So the first thing that will happen for FY17 is that our DA schools, or those 16 that we just discussed, will be the first schools that will be able to advertise. Typically, they'll have probably the largest number of openings, so they'll get a jump on advertisement before any of our other schools can do it. It's about a week, it's, I think it's a week or a week and a half window that they'll have the jump on advertising in front of our other schools. So we do that. In addition, we put into place, and it was part of one of the clauses in the new contract that you all just approved a week or two ago, is that we are offering bonuses to teaching staff at our DA schools, or at those 16 schools, with a three-year commitment. And so that will be a difference in this year. That teacher churn that Martha referred to, yes, and it is true that money doesn't get you everything, but money is definitely helpful in terms of providing a level playing field for the teachers at those schools. And then in addition, we're hoping that that commitment, you know, in conjunction with that additional bonus money, will keep the teacher churn down and will decrease the teacher churn as time goes along. So we've committed to that bonus over the next three years, FY17, 18, and 19. And our intent is to give an increasing bonus in each of the three years, so that we are, hopefully, we'll be seeing increasing return on the investment the longer the teacher stays in the building. So that is the intent. The amounts for 17, 18, and 19 are still to be determined. We're working on those, but we will be communicating that with those 16 schools very soon. The additional student support, at this point, what we have planned for FY17 is we know that one of the issues at several of our schools, or many of our schools of the 16, is the frequency of different things that may come at any given point in time. When you have a lot of student turnover and new students coming in on a daily basis, you may have a situation today that you did not have yesterday. And we need to have employees in place quickly to deploy, to help diffuse situations as schools find themselves in them. So we have five PARAs that are down here in the district office, and this year, Ms. Hayes was responsible for deploying those PARAs where we felt we needed them and when she felt we needed them. So we'll continue to do that. In addition, we have academic coaches at the district level that will be specifically assigned to support DA schools, and at this point, we have six in the budget that are there to support them. One of the risk factors that Ms. Hayes talked about was our ESOL population, or that, the second language factor. And so we know that many of our schools need additional support in this area. So in the budget next year, we have planned for four ESOL specialists, 13 ESOL PARAs at the various schools, and a migrant teacher and PARA that also will be there to help with our schools with the larger migrant population.
Thank you. Mr. Toyber?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Doctors Morris, so of the deployment, we have 30 new people as far as resources, and 20% of those resources are downtown. Can you explain why we want to put 20% of extended resources downtown rather than in the locations where we're looking at?
So the ones that you're referring to as downtown, are you talking about the six district-level people and the five PARAs?
Just the six primarily. The five PARAs I know are going to be deployed.
Yes.
I didn't say, are the academic teachers also going to be deployed? Okay.
Yes, yes. They will be specifically working with different schools. They're not based at one school, and that's why they're kind of located down here. But as we go along, there's additional resources that are specifically at the school, so I'll come to those, but yes.
Right, right. I'm okay with, I figure when we get big enough, we need to have somebody to herd the cats down here, but I mean, the initial one, as long as those are going to be the initial onset, it should be in the cats.
Yes, mm-hmm, yep. Okay. In addition, some of the issues that we know that our schools here struggle with as well is the need for additional wraparound services. So social workers is another area that we are trying to concentrate off for next year. We have three additional in the budget for next year dedicated to DA schools, and we continue to look at that, as well as behavior specialists. That's one of the things that the schools have really expressed a real need for. So we have three additional dedicated to DA schools that are also in the budget for next year, and those also will be associated or placed at each of our DA schools, or we'll have a rotation between those. So those are the specific positions that we've allocated in the budget for next year. In addition, some of the things that will continue are the TIF teacher leaders. So each of our 16 schools that are listed here have those teacher leaders. We just had a discussion yesterday with Ms. Davis and Mr. Dobins over the TIF grant about the evaluation that we had gotten about that grant and how helpful and useful the TIF teacher leaders had become. And I think Martha in some different meetings has attested to that as well. So we will continue that program. They'll be there to continue to support our DA schools. We started the fifth quarter program last year, and if you recall, we had said, okay, we were going to continue that for at least the next year to determine what the results of that would be. So we plan on continuing the fifth quarter in this current summer, and that's budgeted at 10 of our schools. And then in addition, all of our Title I schools get extra professional development days, I believe it's three at the beginning of the school year, you know, in addition to what any of the other schools get. So in terms of really trying to look at what our supports for DA schools will be, we're trying to put our money where our mouth is in FY17 as far as providing some additional support for DA schools. We have our school allocations coming out at the end of this week, on Thursday they'll come out. So in conjunction with the school allocation, the regular DRA allocation they'll receive, as well as Title I funds that they receive, as well as these particular DA supports that we're putting out, we're going to be kind of letting the schools digest all those pieces of information which they will receive at the end of the week, and then evaluate and have a conversation with each of them individually about how do these supports fit into what your plan is for next year, and if there's anything, any ground that we've left uncovered, what is that ground, and what do we have to do to make sure that we're continuing to push in the right direction for them this year. The additional supports that we're putting into the budget, all the positions that we talked about, about one point, for the new positions for next year, about 1.4 million in addition to the salary incentives, which are about 2 million by themselves. And then fifth quarter is budgeted at about 700,000. And then, of course, the TIF teacher leaders, the extra days, and the DA coaches that each of the individual schools have are on top of any of those amounts.
Okay, Mr. Toyber.
Is any of that money, can we take out of the, our Title I money?
Yeah, there are various funding sources for each of those. Title I is covering a large portion of that. We also have TIF covering some of it, and the general fund covering some of it.
Is it possible we get a breakdown on that one?
Absolutely, yeah. We can send you a breakdown of what that is, yes. Okay. So that's what we have planned as far as DA supports, and the conversation, of course, will be continuing with each of our schools as they receive their resources.
Great. Okay, Mrs. Morgan, and then Mrs. LaRiviere.
You've talked about, we've talked about incentives to drive principals and teachers towards the hard-to-staff and the schools that are in need of support. How are we, are we going to have inexperienced social workers and inexperienced behavioral specialists? In other words, new social workers, new behavior specialists? Or are we, and are we going to be able to incentivize experienced specialists to go to those positions? That's my first question. And then my second question is, the presentation that we had on the fifth quarter this fall showed that some schools were very successful in terms of the outcomes, and some showed no change at all. And so I guess my question is, from a budget point of view, is there something happening there to possibly change those outcomes?
So Ms. Saretta may want to speak to a little of this, and if I'm incorrect, please, you know, come on up and let me know. But as far as the other services that are being provided to the schools, social workers, behavior specialists, the idea would be that the most experienced and the best resources that we have, we're going to try to deploy to our schools that are most in need. So even though we might be hiring three additional for this year, if those three are totally brand-new, that does not mean that those are the three specifically that would be deployed to our DA schools. So the plan would be to place the experience where it is most needed, which is in these 16 schools, and that's what they're working on as far as that's concerned right now. As far as fifth quarter is concerned, we have, so I think because last time was the first time around with it, there were some things that we, you know, that I know that the whole crew, Jeannie, Saretta, and other people that were involved in fifth quarter kind of looked at and said, okay, what are the issues and how could we kind of mitigate those for this year? I know one of the things that I think the schools who were successful, I heard, I think that they found most beneficial, was that if they could retain the teachers that they currently had in their schools, I think they, for fifth quarter, I think they found that to be really beneficial, because those were the teachers that really knew the kids that were going to come and participate. And so I think to that extent, we are working to try to do that for this current fifth quarter.
I just, just remind them, we worked also in contract negotiations along those lines to literally change the way that we staff summer school, to make sure that assignment at that home school actually was over the seniority piece. So that was, you know, in part because of the fifth quarter piece.
The other thing that we did was, in some of the cases with the schools that were less successful, if we looked at it, attendance was an issue. And our schools that did very well, we had, they had a follow-up plan, they called every single day when a child was not there. So I have spoken with all the principals at the DA schools to make sure that they have an attendance plan in place to get that steady commitment from their students.
Thank you. Mrs. LaRiviere?
I am just thrilled to see the additional staffing for social workers. That is, that is a critical piece. And thank you too for the behavior specialists. Many of our students come from homes where their parents lack the capacity for teaching their students. And so therefore, sometimes we need some behavioral specialists that will work with our teachers, to know how best to teach appropriate behaviors and to manage those. So I just, I really appreciate that. And just kudos to all of you. And I know there's many hands that are part of this piece, but thank you for doing what is equitable, not necessarily equal, but is equitable, to level the playing field for our students.
If you, if you don't mind, let me just want to mention a couple, a couple of quick things that's relative to what you just mentioned. You know, the incentives that are in this particular plan is something that actually I want to credit Dr. Decimores for. She was looking at our Title I funding, and this is literally, you know, as we are in bargaining, but looking to come up with a creative solution for the use of this funds that would be of benefit to these students. And so as a result of that, the team crafted these incentives. But that would not have happened, that was not initially part of our plan, but she saw a need to reallocate these resources in a more effective manner, and so I thought that was, that was pretty innovative on her part. I just appreciate her bringing that to our attention, and then working with our partners in the union to make that happen for these teachers. And then secondly, I mentioned it earlier, but I want to drive this home, the DA principals, when they did meet with me, they were very, very clear about how much they valued the support that they received from the district, specifically from Ms. Hayes. And so I just want to make sure that we all understand that. I mean, she did a tremendous job for us this year, and I don't, I don't know how public we are about this, but she is, you know, she is, will be retiring from the district or leaving the district to enjoy other things, to take on that next chapter, but she's certainly helped us out. We've learned a lot, and I know her DA principals truly love her and appreciate the value that she brought to the table. And so I think this would be the probably last opportunity that I'll have to do this in this type of form, so I want to thank her for her service to the school district of Lee County.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Great presentation. Shall we go ahead with Melissa and then come back to that? Okay. All right. Now at this time, we will invite Mrs. Robry and Mrs. Mackia to come forward and talk about the proposed 2016-17 instructional materials plan. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, if I could, just while they're coming, there was one issue that was mentioned in the presentation there with respect to the requirement for an additional hour of reading for the 300 lowest-performing elementary schools and whether that would continue.
Yes.
And just to give you an update for your information, the legislation, the legislature did continue that exact requirement for another year for fiscal year 16-17. It's still 300 schools, 300 lowest-performing elementary schools for that extra hour.
Okay, thank you. Oh, the gang's all here. Great, we love teams. Thank you.
Okay, so good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. We're going to talk to you today a little bit about our instructional materials adoption. This year, it was a smaller adoption. We did have this year, we're looking at career and technical education. The course that we were looking at specifically is digital information technology. We also were looking at elementary music and art. Now, the unique thing about elementary music and art is that is not one that we have adopted recently, or in fact, that we've had any materials that honestly I can even remember in recent history from being in elementary school. So those are the three items that were up for adoption at the state level. So we did go through the process to allow each of the committees to meet. It's completely up to them, once they decide, as they look through the materials, as to if it's something that they would like to recommend purchasing, if it's something that they can do without. So actually, the team that you see behind us are some of the members who served on those committees. So we thought it was best that you hear from them, so that way if you had questions, they were able to answer specifically as to why they selected those materials. So again, I want to thank all of them, so they even came out here today so that they could be a part of it. And again, as they went through this process, this was a process that was open to the community. We did have websites, the website was open, it was available on our district website. I know we actually even extended it, because when Melissa and I came and presented at DAC, we had some people who expressed an interest in being on the committee. So we kept that window open a little bit longer to allow people to put in, we, I think it was CSI, curriculum advisory. So we tried to get the information out there that it was available, but again, it is a commitment. So if you are on the committee, what you'll see posted up for you there is that the committee had tasks. So their first task was they had to attend a training. That was a three-hour training, and during that training, that went over the interest-based process. So it's not, we're just going to try and, you know, take a vote and majority wins. It's really going through the interest-based process and looking at all pieces of it. Also, they had to look at the curriculum and standards review process, and it was kind of interesting for me, and I won't tell you which one, but I went in, sat in on one of them, and there was one that had a really pretty glitzy package. And as the committee re- And as the committee really got into it, they were able to see that while it was very pretty on the outside, and they started comparing it to some of the standards and what they needed it to teach, it didn't have the content that it really needed it to have in there. So those are really the two pieces that are most important for them as they go through that training to understand that. Then they also had publisher presentations. So each publisher had an opportunity to come and present up to 50 minutes to this specific committee. Now, prior to the committee even meeting, so I'm going to jump back for a minute there, the publishers did have an opportunity. We did an open showcase. So that way, if you were not able to be a part of the committee, so for example, all the art teachers could come down and check out what the materials looked like and see what they looked like. And the publishers were actually here. They held an open showcase. And to be honest, I don't remember the date offhand. It was in January. When was it?
Twenty eighth.
There we go. See, I knew Rob would know it right off of that. So it was the 28th, and they were able to come and observe what all the materials were and really look at those. And then there were certain people that were able to commit all the way through, going through the committee tasks. So during that committee meeting, they did have publisher presentations. Some of them had fewer than others. And then they were able to sit and deliberate in order to select those materials. So they had the opportunity, we gave them all day, to really sit and discuss and have those conversations. Some of them took more time than others. Once they got in, they were able to see how much content it really had in there. So the materials were reviewed based on a rubric. And then the activities provided really helped them narrow the selection as they went through that. So I am going to turn it over to, at this time, Melissa Johnson. She is our teacher on assignment for career and technical education. And she's going to introduce her team. And they're going to talk to you a little bit about what they selected and what they're recommending for adoption.
Good afternoon. The Digital Information Technology Textbook Committee unanimously recommends for the textbook adoption, Cengage Learning. Cengage Learning will provide us with three resources. The first is a textbook, Discovering Computers in Microsoft Office 2013: A Combined Fundamental Approach. The second item we'll receive is a Skills Assessment Manager, also known as SAM. This will give us a database of questions for our students to use while practicing for industry certification. And finally, MindTap. And this is a powerful online platform for students to use where they can get into simulations and actually access many more resources. The committee included both the current digital information technology teachers and a community member. Again, they unanimously chose Cengage Learning because the standards were aligned. Well, the resources were aligned to the Florida standards. And it allows the ninth grade students to move at their own pace, which is very essential while we're teaching these students the Microsoft Office bundle. In case any software updates would occur during this time, Cengage Learning assured us that they would upgrade to 2016 for no charge, which was great to hear. We also have the Curriculum Advisory Board support from last night's meeting. And if we're looking at totals, the textbook and resources for the district totals $533,000 and 380. That's $40 per class print set and $90 for the students' digital access to both SAM and MindTap. Overall, we were very pleased with what they had to offer. And the user-friendliness of this program was out of this world, you know, great compared to what we are using currently. So I'm going to turn it over to Rosie Perez, and she is a teacher at Island Coast High School.
Hello. How's everyone doing today? As, as a teacher in the classroom, these industry certifications are very difficult to teach our students. The Microsoft bundle consists of Microsoft Word, Outlook, PowerPoint, and sometimes Excel, which for me is the one that I used when I worked at the stock market in Chicago. So I think that's the most valuable one. But this program really allows us to differentiate within the classroom. So if I have a group of students that have excelled and mastered Microsoft Word, I can then move them on to the next industry certification. And the goal is for the students to obtain as many as possible, three, preferably, within a year. And sometimes that is difficult. This program is simply amazing because we can definitely do that.
And then Nicole Bailey from South Fort Myers.
Good afternoon. I'm a teacher currently in the freshman IIT class at South. And I have a lot of ESOL students and ESE students, and they're all grouped together with every other student. So I felt that the Cengage program allowed for a lot of differentiated instruction. The students can work at their own pace and move ahead and get more certifications, whereas other students might have more links to supplemental material and definitions and terms that they've not heard of or comfortable with. With Chromebooks coming into the school next year, Microsoft Office doesn't really run real well with that, with the current program we have. They wouldn't be able to open up the program and use it on a Chromebook if they were at home or in another classroom wanting to study. But with the Cengage, there would be simulated software on there, and they could have access to partial, you know, just the skill that they needed for that lesson. And we felt that was very positive for the students. We also, looking through the Cengage textbook that they gave to us, there were a lot of more real-life situations. I'm currently teaching Excel, and I don't know how many students tell me every day, I'm never going to use this. And I, I can't tell them enough, that's the one you're going to need to know, the most valuable one. And they don't see a real-life connection to it with Cengage. It really did allow opportunities for them to see where they could use it in real life.
A lot of it is real-world projects that the students are doing. So it can really, they can really relate to the content. And I think that's very important. It's not just open a slide, save a file, you know? It's how can you really use this in the business world, so.
Well, thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Mrs. LaRiviere.
We enjoyed looking at it last night. I will say, one of the things that was really, I found interesting as I just kind of briefly scanned, they all, there was, there were a lot of problem-solving situations. All right, your website still is not showing to the right page. What are the steps you need to do? So it, it just forced the students to go through those problem-solving scenarios and work through it. And the best thing is to know that Cengage will do those updates for us. That's very, that's a very powerful piece. And it keeps us from spending more money along the way. So teachers seem to be really excited about it.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Mrs. Dozier.
Not really a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for sharing with us what pieces are important, what curriculum is important to you and why it is important to you and why it is important for the students to have that piece of curriculum. Because, you know, as we make decisions, we don't necessarily know sometimes just because we've looked at something. Like, all of the curriculum comes into our office, and we look through it. And, and I know sometimes with certain, certain topics or certain subjects, we may look at it with a very critical eye, and we're able to, you know, be right hands-on and know the one that we should have. But with some topics, subjects, we don't have, you know, we don't have the knowledge that you have one-on-one with the students. So, you know, I don't recall ever anyone coming to the table and saying, this is how this works, this is how it affects the students. So thank you so much for doing that. And it gives us a much clearer picture of what you need, what the students need, and how we can assist you. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions at this point? Okay, you want to proceed?
Thank you so much.
And next up, Lori Carlson is going to come with her team to talk to you about elementary art and music. And again, this is kind of one of those areas that we have not traditionally had a curriculum. And one of the challenges we found is if you're a brand-new teacher to art and music, and we just say, here are the standards, here's the whole school of kids, congratulations, go get them. And so that was kind of one of the things that they grappled with is that they went through the process. Because obviously, having been on their own for many years, there were some very differing opinions with the group as to what they needed. So I will turn it over to them.
Good afternoon. The music and art committees consisted of, the music was 14 teachers, which were representative of all three zones. The art team had 10 members and one community member. And again, representative of all three zones. Now, I'll let the teacher speak. This is Jason, and he will talk about the music program.
I'm in my, currently in my fifth year of teaching in Lee County for music. It's the only county I've ever worked for. When I first came down here, I had no resources in my classroom. You were told, like, she said before, here's the standards, this is what you have to teach with. And if you ever looked at the state music standards, it's K to five, so it spans six grade levels, and they're all vague. And they're a subject interpretation. And in some cases, that's great because it gives you freedom. But in some cases, in regards to teacher retention, especially with first-year teachers, that is a scary thought. It's very intimidating to see 24 standards a grade level for six grade levels and having to think, how do I fit this into a year? Which ones are the ones that are most important? And as you read those standards codes, those standard codes, it looks very, very, very monotonous and very vague, and you don't know what to do. And I've discussed with a lot of music teachers that have left our county and have left the profession, and I ask, well, why? And they said, the lack of support is the biggest reason why they leave our, the profession. And I, as a lover of music education, and I find the importance of it, when I hear the lack of support, that, you know, it digs a little deep. With these, this textbook, the Pearson, it was the best choice out of three because it provided two really important things to us. It provided a structure that we've never gotten in this county. If a student leaves my classroom and goes to, for example, an elementary school out in the Cape, they'd be on two different levels. Not because we have two different, the quality of teacher is not different. It's what type of content and resources that we're provided is different. So they'll be on two different levels. And I think in all subjects, especially a core subject like music and art, that needs to be the same. Pearson provides a structure that allows teachers to be on the same play, same page, on the same pace. Another thing, though, it, I know it's kind of an oxymoron, it also provides a little bit of flexibility, too. It wasn't as rigid, and you have to teach this then, but it provided basic guidelines. You could, you teach this then, but you can apply your own to it. I took some of the samples that Pearson provided, and I applied it to my classroom recently. And the kids liked, it was an easy-to-use software, easy-to-use program, it's easy-to-use software. It's teacher-friendly, and it's very modern.
And it's all digital.
It's all digital. That's, and that's the key point. It's all digital at this point in time. It's not just a textbook for the kids to read out of. It's an interactive music program, and it's in its name, Pearson Interactive Music, so.
This is Ann. She's going to talk about the art program.
All right. That works for me. Good afternoon. I'm Ann Celia. I am at Pelican Elementary. I'm teaching many years. 1978 was my first year, so I'm a veteran. I take a few years off every so often to rejuvenate and get my life in order. And then I wind up in the substitute pool and realize where I belong. So I'm back.
Good for you.
Thank you. I was on this team because I really feel this district is lacking in this unity in the arts. When I get a student from another school, and that happens often, I have no clue what they've been taught, what they have. And they're just dumped in to catch up. As a veteran teacher, I can plan. I hate to do it, but I can. I know what I'm teaching. I know what these skills are. I know what these kids need to get a scholarship when they get to high school in the arts. We need to provide something, an enrichment especially, for children who want to go home after school and continue. If they can go onto Davis Publications through this site that we're offering, if we adopt this, it's going to be great. My kids now say, oh, Mrs. Celia, I went and I looked up so-and-so. This is a safe site for them to research further. My kids, when they are studying an artist in my room, they go home and check it out. Well, you've got all of these things that may pop up. This is safe. They can go through hundreds and hundreds of images. And these texts online, digital textbooks, allow them to do some further enrichment. They can try the next step. They learned it here in class, what can I do to add to it? So I just feel it's really important for our kids and for our teachers. It's going to save them a ton of time in planning. If I was a new teacher, I don't know how I would do it because I have a lot of kids and very little planning time. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Toyber.
Well, we sure are lacking passion. You'd think they'd want to be a little bit more passionate about what they're bringing forward. I just want to thank, you know, it's, it's a, it's a lot of work for you guys to participate in this committee and to do the work that you did and to bring forward to us this information. But the passion is not lost on us, and, and the importance of, of the things you articulated as far as the unity across the district, to be a school district, is very clear. You know, our transient rate is, is sky, is huge, and it's always been huge. And, and for us to be able to lose that continuity, it's not only a disservice to our children, but it's also a disservice to our teachers that, again, like you said, are just lost. And it exacerbates the issue of trying to, to bring them together. When you say differentiated teaching, you don't mean it that way. You know, it's different when you know where everybody is, differentiated teaching. But to try to guess and to get your, get everybody up to speed and, and to do that. So, so I appreciate the effort that you guys did, and it's, it's very good.
Thank you. Mrs. Dozier.
Thank you for your continuing to be so passionate with the arts. Arts are very near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate it. I'm looking here, and one of the things that really caught my eye was the fact that $3 per student seems extremely just small potatoes. And we all talk about, you've got to put the arts in, you've got to put the music in. Because if you don't, I, my favorite thing is, that's the hook that keeps a lot of kids in school. And if you take that hook away and you eliminate the arts, then guess what? You've already lost a bunch of kids, and those kids are saying, I'm going to quit when I can quit, you know? And we don't want to do that. We want to keep that hook there so we can, you know, reel them in and keep them in school. Here, it, it, under cost per student, and I don't know who can answer this question, says $3 per student, but then over here, under the estimated cost, it's $79,820 per student. Can anybody answer that question?
I think that's a typo.
You can't.
I think that's a, that's got to be a.
So the way the, the publisher bundles this, some of the students are counted in the school purchase. So there's a pot of kids in that. And then to pick up the rest of the students was the $79,000 amount. So I just calculated it out to get us the, the $3 per student.
Okay. Okay. So you, okay.
So.
This is misleading, and the, in the wrong person's hand, hands, they could take this and really go with it. So we need to change that and somehow not use per student twice.
Sure, sure.
Because that, I can just see in.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah, I can see.
Seventy-nine thousand is the $3 calculated out for the per-student cost. Got it.
Now, I understand that, but.
Students not included in the school cost.
And it's per-student cost, the way it's saying here.
Sure, okay.
So if we can show that some other way, because I would certainly hate for the headlines to be, Lee County spends $79,820 per student, which they would love to have that as a headline. And it is not the headline. Although, we'd love to spend that much per student.
We'd love you to spend that much money, too.
If the state would give it to us, we'd spend it on them.
We'd do that.
Mrs. LaRiviere.
One of the things that I appreciated about the music is the fact that the students can, can play the instruments online. So that it will give the students that opportunity to play with. It's not the same thing as having the real instrument, but that, that they will be able to do that. And I, I really have to be very proactive and say that we are very fortunate to have Lori Carlson. And I believe that, I believe we need to keep a coordinator for the fine arts in our district because STEAM is important, but STEAM is better personally. And so I thank you, Lori, for being there. And thank you, teachers, for your presentation and willing to, willingness to take that time.
Board members, anyone else?
Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you for kicking it up a notch and choosing these programs that allow for enrichment and students to move on if they want to. And I think this board has always been committed to supporting the arts, even through the tough. And I think this board has always been committed to supporting the arts, even through the tough times, and we will continue to do so. Thank you for all you do. Mrs. Morgan?
I just have one question. The, um, the technical, okay, high school career and technical education, that will be updated one year? It's just one year? The high school career and technical education, they will guarantee an update for this year?
What they guarantee is when Office 2016 rolls out, they will update the content to match that platform.
Okay. How long would you expect this software, what's the life of this software?
This, this adoption is a five-year adoption. So that price that we're paying, it covers the five years.
And that is support and upgrades?
Correct.
Okay.
And professional development, too.
That is correct.
So we will also add that to the PowerPoint because it's important for people to understand that that is a five-year commitment. That's for the, the life of the adoption.
Wonderful.
I have the opportunity, good afternoon, to share with you the public access that's available to review materials as well as next steps for us in this process. So I will tell you, Brandy mentioned that our journey began several months ago in this process. In January, we held a publisher showcase where teachers and community members could come and talk directly with the vendors and could view the materials, both online and the paper copies of the materials. And we had a great turnout. We were really happy about the, the community support and teacher support that we received at that and the interest in these materials. We made online access review for all of the materials that the committees were considering, started in January. So those have all been on our website, our, our district website, since January. Then when the committee made the recommendation, we have narrowed the viewing options to those things that we're asking for your approval to adopt. So when you go to our district website, there is a curriculum and staff development page, and I'm going to take you directly there. That looks like this. And, um, it won't go away. So as a part of this page, it gives our community the opportunity to see the adoption schedule for the next, for the next few years from the state. As a reminder, in 2016 and 2017, we will be considering social studies materials, K-12. The following year, we'll be considering science, K-12. 2018, 19, we'll be considering mathematics, K-12. And in 2019, 2020, seems like a long way away, but not really, we'll be considering ELA and reading, K-12. So those are the next few years of our adoption consideration. As a part of this page, there is also a timeline that indicates the public's opportunity to provide additional input regarding what the committees have recommended. And as you see there, on April 5th, we will have our public hearing to receive a public comment regarding the instructional materials that are recommended by the committee. April 19th is our board member, our board meeting to adopt. On April 19th, we will post the objection form. Because you remember from last year's process, the new statute allows for, once the board adopts the materials, then for objections to be submitted. So we will open that process at that time, on May 19th, to make those objections available. And then on June 14th, will be the public hearing to review any objections that, that come in regarding the materials that are recommended. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is, as you go to further down the page on the site, you can also go directly to the, the resource, whether it's elementary art, elementary music, or the CTE digital resource. And community, you open the link, and it will take you directly to the student resources. One of the real advantages that you heard some of the teachers talk about is because they have access on our SharePoint site for our employees to the, the teacher and the student resources, they were able to take some of the resources back to their school and try them out with their students and get student feedback on, you heard some of the committee members say their students were more engaged, or it was more real world for their students. And so that's a really nice way for us to get some real-world input on the materials that we're looking at. So that, that is our process. Those are our next steps. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here today to take you through the work of our staff. I do want to take this opportunity to recognize Rob Stratton, and he did not know I was going to do this. He's sitting right next to me, but he has coordinated this entire process. And when you're talking about leading our coordinators through the process, working with all of the vendors, organizing all of the events, the access, he, he does an outstanding job at that, and we appreciate all the work that he put into this to make it successful. Any questions?
Great job.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I want to thank everybody for all that information. And at this time, we will move back up to executive services and look at item number two, evaluation of the superintendent and school board attorney pre-briefing. And for that, we'll have Mr. Keith Martin, our board attorney, and Dr. Jeff McCullers. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, board members, to begin this section of the agenda, I will review with you the first two documents in this, in this component, in this group of documents, which are the amendment to the employment contract and the proposed revisions to the policy concerning evaluation of the superintendent and school board attorney. You'll remember, beginning of last week, I emailed to each of you a copy of the proposed documents and asked that you send to me only any suggestions for revision. I did get one suggestion for revision and have made a couple of small changes to these two documents. And I've provided you each a hard copy of those revisions at your station, and those are a little bit different than what you'll see in the agenda. So I'll walk through these with you and point out those additional changes. So let's start with the amendment to the employment contract for the superintendent, which is the one-page document, the first page that you have there. And this document simply replaces the present Section 6, evaluation of the superintendent, with this new language, this new paragraph. And if you read through it there just briefly, the first sentence provides for that annual full evaluation by September 15th of each year, beginning with September 15, 2016. The last sentence addresses the interim assessment that you wanted to create as part of that schedule, to be by March 15th each year, beginning with March 15, 2017. That interim assessment accomplished in accordance with board policy. The middle sentence, the second sentence, is the one I have added. Mrs. Dozier pointed out that the amendment also needed to address the interim assessment that you, that the board has decided to do this year. I could not add that to the third sentence because it will not be done in, as provided in school board policy because that issue is not addressed in board policy, and there's not time to revise the policy before you, before the deadline you have set to accomplish that interim assessment. So we just added that one sentence in the middle, that the board will complete that interim assessment by the 30th of April in a manner agreed to by the parties, meaning the school board and the superintendent. Any questions, any suggestions on that document? If there's agreement on that, I can go ahead and bring that forward at the next meeting so it's accomplished before your deadline for the interim assessment.
Is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Martin.
The second document, evaluation of the superintendent and school board attorney, which is presently policy 1.061, proposed to become 1.16. Just walk you through the revisions that you see there. 1C, that revision is to address the request that the board made that there be a requirement to, for any evaluator who scores a highly effective or an unsatisfactory to provide an explanation in the evaluation document. 2A is for the same purpose, that if there's a failure to provide that explanation, then that evaluation is considered incomplete, would not be included in the, in the composite evaluation calculation. Then on the second page, 3B is a revision that I don't know that we have discussed before, but is one that I was proposing as part of the review of Chapter 1. And this is just to clarify that in that process of creating the composite score, when you throw out the highest and the lowest ratings, that you do so for each category, which is the practice that has been used. But the present wording is open to different interpretations, so my suggestion was to make that clear. And then that last paragraph, the new 4, is about the interim assessment that you discussed. And again, that that would be accomplished annually by date established in the superintendent's employment contract. Form used would enable board members to provide input with respect to each of the performance categories. And then that last sentence is one that I added. Mrs. Dozier, again, had suggested that needed to be clear that the interim would not involve a numerical rating like the annual evaluation. So I've had that, added that additional sentence. Any suggestions, concerns on this item? This one, we can't bring forward just yet because the evaluation instrument is part of the policy. So that's the next discussion for you to have, that Dr. McCullers is going to present changes to that document.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Welcome, Dr. McCullers.
Board members, we do have the, the rest of the instruments here. There are a lot of moving parts to this process. So we wanted to, to pre-brief with you and make sure that we were on track and to make sure that there weren't any more changes or more information you wanted in a full briefing. As Mr. Martin suggested, we cleaned up some of the, the dates and, and processes in the guidelines. For example, changing the September 30th to September 15th, so it lined up with the proposed changes to the superintendent's contract. On the AAI, for example, he noticed that the ratings categories that we had, highly effective, effective, needs improvement, needed to have a numeric equivalent to conform with the current board policy requiring a numeric assessment. So we added that. That's the, that's the scoring mechanism that had always been anticipated and which had been built into the scoring worksheet, but we're just putting it here so it's explicit and so that it conforms with the policy. We also updated the scoring worksheet itself, which I don't think you had seen. We have discussed much in detail. It's been presented here, but. So for instance, I don't know how well you can see it, but the way the, the scoring worksheet works is, it's a, it's a typical Excel worksheet. There are multiple tabs. The first tab is used to record individual board member scores. Once the board member completes their, their evaluation, the school board office manager will input the scores for each of the performance categories into this sheet. Will add the information from the strategic plan data sheet, which is the, the final pre-scored section that, that you will receive. And those are then combined on an individual rating sheet that gives an overall score for each board member. Yes, ma'am?
Are you talking about this very first piece of this document? When you refer to the, it says summary of evaluation for the scoring sheet. Is that what you were talking about?
I'm talking about the, um, the scoring worksheet.
Page 31.
Which, thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't, we don't have that electronically?
You have a, um, a PDF version.
It's in our packet.
Of it, starting on page 31. That's the first tab for the sheet. So this is, this is really an internal school board office process. Your office manager will be the only person that will actually use it. She will input the scores, as I said, on the first sheet. It produces an average rating for each board member on the second sheet, which shows up as page 32 in your agenda. And then the composite rating, which is a little more involved, is on the third sheet. And in, in order to conform with the discussion that you, we had last time and with the changes just proposed by Mr. Martin, the scoring sheet reviews the, each of the scores in each of the performance categories. It subtracts automatically the high score and the low score. It adjusts the mean score and then produces a composite rating for each board member individually, and then for all board members together, which is the final grand total of all evaluation processes to that point. That would combine all of the ratings in each category from each of the, the board members and the strategic plan data into one united evaluation. Yes?
And, and just to clarify, Ms. Johnson's not here, but this really does take, it will not be very time-consuming, consuming for Ms. Johnson to do this because Excel spreadsheet already has the, the information in there. So it will calculate to the category weight and so on, correct?
We've, we've been trying to test it and, and break it all along and succeeded a few times. But it seems to be working now, and everything looks to be coming out right. It does include the weighting, the category weightings that are also in the guidelines document, and I'll point that to you so we're clear about that. And Mr. Martin had asked that we make that clear. On page 17 of the agenda, the worksheet will have weights. So there are, there are four scored categories completed by each board member, leadership information, support for teaching and learning, and so on. A fifth category that's pre-scored, which is strategic plan data. And with five categories, you might start with 20% for each one weighted. The proposed weighting tips a little bit and adds 5% to leadership and management in acknowledgement of the executive role of the superintendent, and takes the 5% from the strategic plan data, which is in considerable degree the work of everybody in the district, rather than just the superintendent alone. So that's the rationale for the weighting. That's obviously, like everything else here, open for discussion and, and for your approval. And we can adjust the, the systems to conform to whatever you want.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, you and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago when I began to try to go in and, and put my comments by the mid-year evaluation. And I suggested then that each one of these goals and indicators be numbered. I still believe that not only is it important for that document, but I believe it is important for this document as well because, like, some of us, even though we only have to, it's required for a rating of needs improvement or unsatisfactory, a lot of us write comments in every single column. So without them being numbered and knowing what comments go with what indicator, things may run together. So I still think that to have a cleaner document, it would be better if all of these were numbered, and our comment section would be numbered as well.
I can absolutely do that. So for instance, in leadership and management, if we come down to the goals and indicators, models would be number one, models of good leadership would be number one, models collateral leadership style, number two. Is that, would that be workable? So that each item was numbered?
Now, which one were you on again?
On the leadership and management section.
Leadership and management, okay, let me get there. So you mean I'll put the number instead of goals and indicators? I have to go to the hard copy. Because we don't have it on here. Yeah, it's right here. Oh, I missed it. Did I miss it? Right. We've got strategic planning and quality improvement, support for teaching and learning. It's the first thing. Information and communication? So it's the first one? It's the first one? Well, I guess, I'll see. Page seven. Mine goes, mine...
It's page 11.
Well, mine begins with information and communication.
Should say.
Look at your hard copy, it's on page 11.
Page 7 of your presentation.
Well, somehow... Now, that's not my number seven. No, go up. Yeah, go up. There you go. I have it in the presentation.
All right, I'm with you now.
Yes, we'll absolutely do that. We'll number the goals and indicators in each section. And if I'm correct, I'm being asked to do that for the interim assessment document to be used from now on, as well as the annual evaluation that will be upcoming.
Correct. Mr. Toyber?
I just, you know, on the front page, on the very front indicator page where the overall performance rating, you know, I understand we went from, we're going from 1 to 4, so there's only a 3 number range, but highly effective has got a spread of .60, the lowest range has a range of .449, and then the two middle, and the second effective is .49, or .949, and the third range is .999. Wouldn't we want to make all those four categories equal? A bell curve?
I'm thinking, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing a bell curve, I'm not sure.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if each one has a .7493 spread, which is equally equidistant from one point to the next, it wouldn't bias, you know, if we're already going to weight it, we don't want to bias it to a curve.
Right. Dr. McCullers?
Well, you're talking about on the actual scoring for the four categories, the four ratings. So instead of 3.4 to 4, being highly effective, it would be 4.0 to 3.25 would be the first one. 3.25?
3.25, well, 3.2508, actually, if you're going to be carried out to four decimals. And then the next one would be 3.2507 to 25015 would be the second one. Then it'd be 2.5014 to 1.7522. And then the last one would be, I don't know what the last one would be, the last one would be...
One, right?
1.7521 to 1.0029. So all of them would have a spread of .7493, equidistant apart from all three of them, all four of them.
I see what you're saying.
Because if we're going to weight them...
If we're weighting the categories.
Then you don't want to put it into a disproportionate bell curve. Unless, Dr. McCullers, you've got a different reason?
Well, this was dividing three points among four categories, that's why it's...
Well, yeah, but if you divide three points under four categories, equidistance is .7493 between each one, we'd have .7493.
All right.
In the numerical range.
I will certainly do that.
Mr. Toyber, are you on page 18?
I'm on page, this is page...
Nine.
Well, it's one of six in the document itself. It's page 5 of the present, I don't know where it is. If you click on the evaluation page, I don't know where the page numbers are on these puppies, let's see.
At the very, very bottom, it says, if you're looking at the presentation, it's page one of six.
Yeah, it's the first page after the policy. It says it's the assessment instrument. It's the very first.
Okay, okay. The overall performance rating?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I was looking at the same thing on 18. Okay, Mrs. LaRiviere, did you have?
Well, and that was just for conversation piece, that it's almost like how we did the grading for the grade scale. We changed it so that it was, each one was a 10-point spread. And so I see exactly where you're going with that, and I agree that maybe the...
Well, and because this is a resultant, because it's taking the numbers, take the numbers, add them divided by the number, so it's a resultant score, so the resultant score should have to fall on a resultant path. It's not a...
We're using the mean of the scores, correct? Or are we using the...
To, yes, you would use the mean.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Dozier? Okay, I am a little bit confused here. All right, we have the one document that, here on the page nine of the hard copy, it says interim evaluation. Now...
Oh, that's...
Just ignore that.
This is a form.
That's why this is the graph.
What's one of the flip fields in the form? So you would, in the case that you would use it, you would flip it to annual evaluation.
Okay, all right, well, as I read that...
Yep.
I found it a little confusing.
I should probably just take that out.
That would be a good idea. All right, the next thing that I had, if I may continue, to ask about was, I cannot remember, and I read on here and I didn't see it anywhere, did we make a decision about percentages? I couldn't remember whether we did or not.
Yeah.
Did we?
Percentages?
What do you mean by percentages?
For the weight, for the category weights.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't, at this point, there's only four boxes, so you don't, there is no numbers, you put it, you mark a box. And the box translates to a, that's what I'm saying, the mark in the box is just, is one of the four boxes. That translates to either a 1, 2, 3, or 4. And then those numbers get added, the five of us, the highest and lowest get taken out, and the three get averaged. That number, that average number, is now no longer a whole number, that number is a percentage, or, you know, a fraction, is a number that's not a, not a whole number.
That's not the part that she's voicing. I know what you're talking about. If you look at the hard copy, page 17, or the presentation copy, page... Wherever it is up here. It's not, but if you look at the hard copy on page 17... There was a conversation that Dr. McCullers addressed as he was talking about what thoughts were with the weighting. It's entirely up to what we as a board decide to do with the weighting. And this is just a suggestion.
Oh, I got you, right.
And he explained it.
So, okay, so then is it a suggestion, or is this what we decided on, the weight of the categories?
I don't, I don't, I believe...
We haven't had a discussion, I don't think.
I don't think we made a definite decision on what we decided on.
Okay.
I think that Dr. McCullers and I shared kind of where our thoughts were when we thought about it, as with the strategic plan data, those pieces, Dr. Atkins does not have direct control over that aspect. And thinking that would be a 15%, and that's where we came up with 15%. And we also believed that category one, the leadership and management, was extremely critical in his role as executive director for the organization, that we felt like that 5% we took off from the 15 needed to go for the leadership and management because it should count more.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
That is an issue that needs to be resolved before the board can move forward. Because that weighting, those percentages, affect the calculation of the composite score, it needs to be incorporated in the assessment instruments that the board actually adopts.
Right, exactly. Then any other comments? Dr. Atkins, did you want to weigh in on this? Please do. You know how I feel about you and this document?
I understand, I will at some point, I'm digesting this right now.
I'm still digesting too, and it's kind of giving me indigestion. Because I want to have, I want to have a document that you are comfortable with. I want to have a document that you absolutely understand and that you feel comfortable with getting the best assessment possible from your fellow board members. And if this document isn't it, then we need to do some more work. So we're looking at page 17 for the weight of the categories, the percentage weight of the categories. And we looked at page nine for the overall performance rating scale.
If you want my feedback, just as it relates to the weighting of the categories, I mean, I would agree with the way that you have that. I like the preponderance of it being in the leadership and management portion and the way it's distributed with the lesser amount as a, down in the strategic plan. So that part I like, that this, overall, the document is, is clear as it, when I went through it and looked at goals and indicators, I guess, you know, what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around right now is just kind of the weighting piece of it.
Well, I'm glad you're trying to get your mind around it, because I'm trying to get my arms, my mind, and everything around it. And just from one board member, I personally believe that there should be more of a percentage with leadership and management, because I think that is one of the most important components as the CEO. So, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to finding, letting that be like 30 or 35%. Because I think that is the biggest and the most important of all of these different categories. That's the most important category of all the categories, your leadership and how you manage the organization. So I think that those should, and right now, you'd get a perfect score.
I appreciate that.
And I think that that is, that right there is the indicator that demonstrates your ability to be the CEO.
Well, and sitting in the chair, I mean, I would certainly agree that when it comes to what makes, what's most important about being successful in the job, it certainly falls into that category. You know, your job is really to paint the vision and persuade others to go along with that vision, manage their performance. They have, one of the things you have to really work on is making sure that they're doing the work, and you have to follow along and make sure that they're doing the work.
Right. So would you have a suggestion then for a different weight? A higher weight for leadership and management, and perhaps less of a weight for category five, since that really isn't in your control?
I could be supportive of that. I mean, if you want to put the category one to either 35 or 40%, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I mean, I would be supportive of that for the reasons that I just said.
And when we were playing with this, we were just saying, here's a number.
Right.
You know, if people, there needs to be, and it doesn't necessarily have to be rounded to the nearest 10 or to the nearest 5. It could be 42%. You know, it could be, it doesn't have to be, do you see what I'm saying?
Exactly, exactly.
Be whatever number we choose.
What?
Could be whatever number we choose.
Exactly.
Right.
It just needs to add up to 100.
Right.
So it's, you know, this is, and, Dr. Atkins...
Well, I think it's important that he...
It doesn't have to raise up to 100. You could just have adders, if you're going to total a score, you could just have something that, you know, if leadership is more important than the other categories, you could just give that a 1.5 multiplier and just make that, you know, that is, you know, that is 50% more important than the other ones. They don't have to, you don't have to make it 100% of the total, you can just give one, you know, because some of them would just stay at 1.0 as far as the multiplier, and I would think that the three of categories would stay, you know, I think there's two categories probably that are more important, you know, the leadership and the development issue paste portions.
The, are you thinking about...
I don't have that handout.
Here you go. Are you thinking about like the support for teaching and learning or the strategic planning?
Leadership and management and strategic planning and continuous improvement.
Yeah, those are the most key areas, and I think what needs to happen is, Dr. Atkins, you've got to make a decision. You need, and I've been trying, bless, I've been trying to get him to say something, what he thought, and he's been very hesitant. He's a very humble man.
I mean, I would propose, you know, a 1.3 or a 1.4 adder for the, first for leadership, and then a 1.2 adder for strategic planning, leave the other three as just a straight 1.0 for the multiplier, and then add those scores up, and that's what it is.
Dr. McCullers, will that work on the spreadsheet?
I would have to make a new spreadsheet. We could probably do that. So in other words, instead of using 1 through 4 in certain scales?
No, instead of using a percentage category, instead of using a 25, for example, a 25% category weight, we'd use a different rating system. I think most of us can relate to the percentage category rate than we could to the adders.
Mr. Martin, please.
Just in terms of timing, it sounds like the board and superintendent may need more time to consider this issue before you resolve the assessment instrument. With, as it sits right now, there's a time, there's a time press, because your next full evaluation is due June 15th, but with the amendment to the contract accomplished at the next school board meeting, that would move back to September, so we do have additional time to accomplish if the board needs more time and superintendent consider these different issues.
Well, I mean, are we in agreement, all of us, including you, Dr. Atkins, that this instrument is what we need? It's satisfactory? Or would there be changes that you would recommend from your perspective, sitting in the leadership seat?
When I reviewed the instrument in terms of, one of the things I do like about it is that it is clear in terms of each one of the specific areas and gives examples, goals, and indicators for each, so that part I like. So, that part I like. If you, if, what I would, since we've had the discussion here today, if you would be all right, I would like to have an opportunity maybe to go back and since it's been asked here at the table, make a recommendation to you as it relates to the weighting. Because, you know, I certainly do believe there, as I just, off the cuff, there are, there is a lot more in the leadership and management part that I do. I think information and communication is also a pretty critical, important piece of the job. As I review some of the other components, I wouldn't weight them necessarily as high. So, I would be happy to come back to you with a recommendation, work with Dr. McCullers and Ms. LaRiviere to do that.
Thank you. I think that helps us out. Okay, comments, board members, Mrs. Dozier. Something else that might help each one of us out is if everybody would take a little bit of their time when they're meeting with the superintendent to kind of get an idea of where you're coming from. So, when we come here to the table, we will already be briefed, so to speak, and we'll be ready to move on and go forward.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRiviere, for your work. And Ms. McCullers, thank you so much for your work.
Yes.
It's a complex thing. Appreciate it.
It is very complex. Okay, so then at this time, we're concluding this. Thank you, Pam. This discussion. Yes, thank you. And Dr. Atkins will come back to us with a suggestion about the weighting and the rest we're good with. Okay, fine, thank you. So then, moving right on, I think we're at public comment. So, Mr. Martin?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. The subject of comment to the board is limited to items on the agenda of the briefing meeting. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes.
Any cards? Anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Seeing none?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
I'd really like to hear Obi-Wan Kenobi. I know he always imparts wisdom to the Jedis. I know Mr. Getz is cold, but you look like Obi-Wan Kenobi, like a learned professor.
And his wife.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, I just couldn't pass that up.
Mr. Getz, did you have anything you wanted to say? Not right now.
May the force be with you.
Thank you. Okay. Then, in that case, we'll let Mr. Toyber continue with his comments as part of board members' reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our DAC committee started a new process this time around where we actually spent more time in our breakout sessions on issues that are particular to the particular breakout groups and not questions for our presenters. And so what we did is we facilitated by making the presenter time a little longer to allow questions to be asked in that time period when the speakers were there. And that, I think that worked out fairly well. We had pretty good positive feedback from our groups. So, I think we'll continue to strive moving forward with that and see how that one works out. They, the DAC committee was, reported back that the that the committee that was selected on the schools' LLL had all, had come together and voted in unanimous vote on the Imperial site. So now we do have all of our votes in. EDAC was unanimous. DAC was unanimous, the group was unanimous. So now, I guess we're waiting now for Dr. Atkins to move us forward. I'm sure he's going to enlighten us on that. I think that's all I have for today.
That is it. Okay, thank you. Mrs. LaRiviere?
Just to make sure, because I think there might have been confusion, so on, I, we're just doing the board members giving our reports about what's happened at our committee meetings, correct?
Well, and any?
Board members advisory committee reports or comments?
Right, and I will do that. I just wanted to make sure because I think Ms. Lochner and I had looked at that and she was thinking she might need to be presenting today. So, we were, so I just wanted to clarify. Oh, no, you're set, okay.
No, it's us as the liaisons.
Okay, perfect. Oh, yes, that's right. We had, we really did have a wonderful night, last night, at the curriculum advisory committee meeting. We have quite a robust group and we're having some of the best discussions. Really good discussions and opportunities to revisit. We spent some time revisiting and clarifying the whole intervention and enrichment and how that is taken care of at the schools. And then, we also took time for the, looking at the materials that were selected by the material adoption committees. There were a couple of questions that came up, so I will share those questions with you. One question had to do with the fact was making sure the we try our hardest to make sure all the information gets out there to the public, but invariably there are such times when people say, we didn't hear about it. And so there were some questions regarding getting information out to the community member regarding their, community members regarding participation in the viewing of the materials on January 28th and also the applying to serve on the committee for adoption. So, there was a question, question was brought up on that to see what we could do more proactively. And a good point was brought up by John Stakely last night that especially with the adoption of the digital classroom. Guess, in the future, we might want to look at some of our adoption and see where we may be proactive in inviting community members from our business community to serve on some of them, especially if it relates to their field. And so that was, so I'm just sharing that, putting that information out there. And I already said it before, but I'm going to say it again. I am so thankful to have Lori Carlson in place. I know that there are many people out there that sometimes wonder why we have some of the coordinators. We do. But if we don't have a coordinator for fine arts, we have no one there to make sure it happens. And I just am really thrilled and glad that we have that position in place. And she has done a good job of taking that and going with it. I had, and speaking of which, I had the pleasure of attending the elementary honors chorus. And it was just an amazing evening. And I wish that, oh, Mr. from Rema Page, the music teacher, who's Golden Apple winner. I can't remember, Jason, I can, Jason, but I can't think of his last name. But he was one of the teachers, the music teachers, that got up and on the last song, they had brought their instruments up and they performed with the students. And that was amazing. That was just so wonderful to see that engagement. And to see the thrill of the parents and kudos, especially for our students who are in the east part of the county. Many of those students don't have access. And to see, to get to the performances and to be there that night and to see the schools working with family members to make sure the students could be there to participate. And several of us had the privilege of being there, taking, Take Stock in Scholars last week. And thank you to Ms. Muthanar for continuing to be a mentor, am I correct? Yes, you're still mentoring. And for those of you out there that are watching us, I encourage you to contact the foundation because we are actively, they are actively looking for people who want to invest in their, invest their lives in our students to help see them become successful and to graduate high school. And the whole ceremony is just it's really, it's really neat. And for some of those students, that's the first time they've ever placed a cloth napkin in their laps. That's the first time, you know, and so the whole, it affords so many opportunities for our students to to reach to reach and attain different opportunities that they might not have had before. And I'm thrilled, thrilled for that. And I read at several schools, I did have to cancel three schools, so I am doing my makeup time. So, I'm still continuing reading across Lee County and sharing books with students.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Great. Mrs. Morgan?
Well, following up on what Mrs. LaRiviere just said, I'm sitting here thinking, we have Parent Link and that alerts parents when there's something that may be of interest to them. But we have no way of sort of alerting the public or people who are interested in things like the textbook review. And maybe we need to be, instead of expecting all the time that people come to us, we figure out a way to push out information. I know, for example, when I'm looking for committee members and I don't have anybody in my district, I will reach out, for example, to the chamber for a finance advisory committee person. But there's got to be a way.
PSAs maybe?
Hmm?
PSAs?
Public services. Yeah, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I think, I like what you said and I've been thinking the same thing, so I just wanted to add to that. Okay, so I attended QIAC. I'm not the board rep, but I was there. It was really well attended. I think your communication was powerful. Their goals at this particular meeting were to understand the major factors related to teacher retention, find connections between teacher engagement and retention, data collection available, and the need to tackle focus area four of the district's strategic plan to hire and retain the best talent. Also distributed the KPI data collection document. The group is doing really good work and with numbers of people there and a variety of people there. I think there's really good information coming out for, I don't, I don't see her, but for HR.
Yes, she's at a training.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Pruitt.
Yeah, okay. I attended the League of Women Voters News Press Forum during which they were talking about open government and public comment. I've passed a critique on to Dr. Atkins. I will simply say that during the panel called Shutting the Door on Open Government moderated by a gal named Peterson who is president of the, oh, Foundation for First Amendment, there was some criticism of district responsiveness. There were three media people on the panel. The print was Cindy McCurry-Ross, TV was Katie Krebs, and the radio was Amy Tardif. They also spoke on an informed media, an informed community. My bottom line after a couple of hours of listening to concerning and about openness of public records is that there probably is some misunderstanding on the part of the public about what we can provide, how we can provide it, and when we can provide it. And Dr. Atkins and I have had some conversations about how to follow up on that. I too attended the Take Stock in Children luncheon. I liked the signing the contract part. That's my favorite part. Because I think that it's, the kids are taking responsibility and publicly acknowledging their responsibility. Mark Mora and Don Huff and I met with Wiley Williams, Jane and Dan Troop of the Hawthorne Board and agreed that Mr. Mora will be the liaison with Mr. Williams, who is a board member, if the high school project moves forward on Imperial. And it was suggested that meetings would be set up with Mr. Snell at regular intervals to let the Hawthorne Board learn of current plans and offer alternatives if they desire to. Let's see, I went to the post legislative delegation luncheon. My takeaway there was they complimented the state legislature on record per pupil funding for public education. I read your IB report. I thought that was terrific because it shows that, unless I didn't read it correctly, the average scores by ethnicity aggregated by free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch were very similar. The number of test takers is constant. They're taking more tests and more, and more of the tests are being passed at a 4-plus level. I think that's terrific. And I, boy, I'd love to know more about that. My last comment would be, as you know, I am president-elect of the consortium. We need to talk about our meeting in August. I would really like to schedule an opportunity for this board to give me advice because I'm not personally, I'm not comfortable with the advocacy that we're doing with the consortium. And I would like to think about the structure of that meeting and.
Where's that one held?
Well.
It's going to be here.
It will be here.
It's going to be here.
It will be here because I will be the president.
So, I would like to have the opportunity to just converse with you all about the consortium and about how we structure the meeting so that the takeaway, I think, is more powerful from an advocacy point of view than it has been. And those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I look forward to that conversation. Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. I attended the Soup Kitchen fundraiser and Tracy Galloway has asked that she be allowed to come to a briefing meeting and share with us everything that they are doing for all of our students. They have actually adopted some of our schools and sometimes we're not aware of everything that different groups in the community do. And I know that's one of the things that we have asked in the past that we wanted to know so that when somebody, when we see somebody, we can say, oh, thank you for what you're doing, you know. And so, in the future, I would appreciate it if we could put her on the agenda for a meeting to come. And we will need to check her schedule too, but I would like for us to do that. Oh, the value adjust.
She wants to do a 10-minute presentation to the board?
Yeah, about a 10 or 15-minute presentation to the board.
Concerns with that. Because we have a lot of people in the community doing a lot of stuff and I don't want to open the door to.
We allow, typically, we allow for people that request a 10-minute presentation. We allow for special presentations, but only 10 minutes. But we do that. And if it's, if it's the kitchen, is it the one that feeds the trailers that feed our, the ones that feed for our backpacks?
Well, yeah, it's our backpack. They've actually adopted several schools.
Yeah, that's.
I guess my comment is, I, there's a lot that a lot of different people in this community do that we don't acknowledge. And I've brought this up in the past. And I think we should be doing more to understand the role they play as partners with our schools and to acknowledge the role they play as partners in our schools. I'm a little concerned about starting to bring one forward for 10 minutes.
She has asked to come forward.
I understand. And I'm just saying that she will ask and then we have a precedent. And I'm just concerned about our response if we set a precedent. So, I would like to understand as a board, as a board, how we are getting a handle around the various partners of our schools, how we acknowledge them. That would be my comment. I'm not saying outright no. I'm just saying that I need to, I need a context for, for this kind of thing going forward.
I'm the messenger.
Okay.
And I, personal, my personal feeling is that when somebody from the community is asking to come to us, again, if we don't want to let them come to us. And I have, I think, at this table, ask and encourage any civic group that is doing something for our school, I would love for them to come forward and give us a presentation so we would know that. In fact, I think the more knowledge that we have about what these different organizations are doing for us, I think the better informed we all are. Because frankly, I did not know, I mean, I, this is an event that I attend every year. My husband sponsors this event. He's one of the sponsors of this event. And the fact that she came up and thanked us for sponsoring and thanked us for a donation that we made that evening. And she said, Jeannie, I'd really like to come and talk to y'all because I don't think, do y'all, are y'all aware of everything that we're doing? And I said, I kind of felt like, hmm, hmm, you know. And then she started naming off, plus they had had an informative little video that they showed. And I went, oh, my God, I didn't know they had adopted that school. Oh, my God, I didn't know they had adopted that school. So, the more we can get the word out, I think the the better off informed we are so that we don't feel like we're caught with our pants down. Because there's, you know, there are a lot of people out there that are doing for our schools and I want them to have the opportunity to come so that we can celebrate and appreciate them for what they. them for what they are doing for our kids.
I don't disagree.
So, thank you. Also, Value Adjustment is meeting on the 29th, and I will be attending that, and this is the last Value Adjustment Board meeting for this year. It has been scheduled, rescheduled, scheduled, and rescheduled again, and this is going to be a very lengthy meeting, because we have such a large agenda this time, so.
Because the rescheduling didn't-
Yeah.
... because you missed a few meetings along the way.
No, I didn't miss it.
Oh, no, no, not you. If they rescheduled and rescheduled, I was just thinking it-
Well, and then, when you, when you have to pile everything on one agenda, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, so.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Anyway, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll just go ahead with my comments before Mr. Martin and the superintendent. Just briefly, at the March 14 Continuous Systemic Improvement Meeting, we had a wonderful presentation by Dwayne Alton, Melissa Robery, and Rob Stratton, and Principal Ann Cole from Calusa Middle School regarding the Chromebooks and Individualized Learning Opportunities through Technology. The committee was extremely interested and involved. Many, many thoughtful questions. As a matter of fact, we actually ran overtime, which we don't usually do, and left it so that people could send further questions to the team and through Dr. Carlin, and that they would be answered. But I wanted to thank those staff members for really informing our representatives to that board thoroughly, and letting them know how, how the technology has really opened up the doors of the classroom, and provides content that's available to all groups, and how kids can work at their own rate of speed, and collaborate, and communicate with one another and their teachers. So that was a very valuable, very valuable meeting. The next thing, I had an opportunity to participate with the Student Services Department regarding their social norming campaigns. They were having an interview with United Way, who has been financing and supporting that program. I left each board member and the superintendent's some little gifts from, from that campaign. And I just wanted to say that because of our community partnerships, and because of the work that's happening together with the Drug Free Coalition, and other members of the community, of the mental health community, and the school district, under the facilitation of April Thompson, who did an amazing job, and the United Way representatives told me that it was one of the best, one of the best presentations that they have had this year, and they will again be providing money for the continuation of the social norming campaign, trying to help kids to understand the importance of making good choices, and to also advertise the fact that it's important for parents and adults to talk to kids, and that most kids are doing the right thing. I also attended the Take Stock in Children, and that's always such a delight. Thirty-five scholarships were awarded this time, and, and I also like the idea that the children take a lot of responsibility in signing a contract to remain drug-free, keep their grades up, and attend school. So, thanks for that. I have had several contacts from people regarding the Spout Contract and the Payment in Arrears, and I'm going to forward that information to Dr. Atkins, so that that can be addressed. Regarding textbook adoption, if I'm not incorrect, we do press releases, and then we also use the Chambers of Commerce to communicate that we will be reviewing those things. And according to Ms. Chandler, our app has push notifications, and that was all done for the last adoption. And I just want to comment on your request, Mrs. Dozier, about the community presentations. I attended Skyline's Mentor Breakfast. It was a thank you to the mentors. And there's a local church in Cape Coral that has adopted Skyline, and this was their fifth annual breakfast, and they have provided immeasurable support through their mentorships, and through their financial support, and their backpacks, and their food, and, and all the things that they do. And I certainly think that the least we can do is to entertain any community agency who has adopted schools and is helping our families to entertain them with a 10-minute presentation at a briefing meeting. I would support that wholeheartedly. I had an opportunity to participate in a conference call that Dr. Atkins and the executive staff had with school principals of each level. And they talked about assessment, academic plans, PLCs, and scheduling for planning for teachers, which we know was, is a big issue. And I just want to say it was eye-opening. I think it was very well-done. And then I know that a written memo went out to principals and teachers, so that people have a clear understanding, and everybody sees and hears the same thing regarding those issues, particularly the assessment, the amount of assessment, and the time taken for that, and the necessity of more time being spent on teaching and learning. So Dr. Atkins may expand on that, but I wanted to really thank him for including me in that, because it was very important. The last thing I wanted to do is, we did not this month recognize Women's History Month, which highlights the contributions of women's, women to events in history and society. It's celebrated during March in the United States, the United Kingdom, and Australia, and it corresponds with International Woman's Day, which was on March 8. It celebrates the accomplishments and obstacles females have overcome. In the past, women were treated as chattel and at most second-class citizens, undeserving mention in history books. Seen as inferior to men, voting, owning property, or even speaking in public was frowned upon. Women's suffrage and the demand for equality turned the tides on that. The women's movement of the '60s played an important role in the fight for women to be recognized as valuable citizens, not just an extension of husband or father. Women as a force to be reckoned with began questioning why they had been held down under the thumb of a patriarchal world. Proclaiming discrimination and demanding equal rights, women were finally heard loud and clear. Before the year 1970, few serious studies were conducted regarding women. As a footnote, the lives of women were considered unimportant by male historians, with earlier history dwelling on political events that affected countries and regions. Women not being a part of the political or war machines, which they are today, factored very little into history. In the '70s, history began changing from strictly political to a social history. The shift in focus went from male-dominated politics to American life as a whole. That included urban and rural life, public health, ethnicity, wealth and poverty, and the media. Finally, in 1981, the United States Congress passed a resolution declaring the week of March 8 as Women's History Week. That week grew into a month, with the president proclaiming March as a month to celebrate women, both past and present. So I'd like to thank all of the women who work so hard, and are definitely part of the lives of, of our students and families for the work they do. And that's all I have. So, moving on to Mr. Martin.
Yes. Miss Fisher, board members, I do have a school law minute today, seeing that we have time, and the subject is public records. I want to talk to you today about computer and electronic records. Information that's stored in a school district computer is public record if it's sent, received, or created in the transaction of official business. So, for example, email messages that you send as a board member, send or receive in the performance of your duties, are public record. And that's true whether they're on your district email account or your private email account. And for that reason, they must be retained. It's not the na, it is the nature of the message, rather than the location, that determines whether that email is public record. Emails on your district computer, on your district email account, that have nothing to do with the performance of your duties as a school board member would not be public record. And emails that do have relevance to your performance of your duties as a school board member on your private email account are public record. I know that, I think it's generally the practice for all of you, when you receive an email concerning an issue having to do with the operation of the school district on, in your private email account, or if you send out an email concerning performance of your duties from your private email account, that you'll copy that to your district email. And the result is that it's then saved on the district server, so you have that ability to retain that public record. Another subject in this context is the use of texts. Generally, the use of text is often for, to communicate a message that has limited content, limited, limited value. It may be just a simple message, so in the terms of the, with respect to the legal term, it's termed transitory. Transitory messages are not public record, you're not required to maintain them. But if you use a text to discuss substantive matters, to communicate substantive information, those texts are public record. So just to give you an example, if you send a text to say, "The meeting's at 3 o'clock, so you're there," that's transitory. It's not a message that has to be retained. But if you were to send a message saying, "The meeting's at 3 o'clock, at that meeting, I'm going to present a recommendation that blank, blank, blank," now that has substantive information in it, and it may be public record. And I present that information to also give you a caution, that with the limited capability to retain texts, that you may want to be cautious about communicating substantive information through texts. It's something to be careful about. Also, social networking sites is an issue I wanted to address just briefly. Any posting to a social networking site, such as Facebook, and the many other different options that are provided to you these days about a matter concerning the performance of your duties or the operation of the school district, is public record. So, for example, if you take a look at a story concerning the school district on the news press website, and you decide to post a comment or explain some issue in that article, when you do so, that's a communication that is public record, just as much as if you wrote a letter to a constituent addressing that issue. So there needs to be some way to maintain it. A number of times I suggest to you, I advise you that there are public records that need to be maintained, and that's one thing I wanted to briefly explain. When I give you the advice that such public records need to be maintained, that doesn't mean forever. The Florida law, when it establishes what is a public record, doesn't say that those public records must be, must be maintained for centuries to come. The Department of State adopts a records retention schedule, which establishes retention time periods for different categories of records, depending on the importance of those records. There are some records that do have to be maintained permanently, such as minutes of school board meetings. Those have to be maintained forever. But records with less historical value don't have to be maintained as long. So just for example, simple correspondence is to be maintained for three years. Another example, most of the documents that are in a personnel file have to be retained for five or less years. So again, the mere fact that an item is a public record doesn't mean it has to be maintained forever, doesn't mean it's going to be available with that agency forever. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was an interesting one. Dr. Atkins?
And just moving right along with the same theme, you know, one of the professional standards, as an example, does retain certain investigatory, investigative files. Five years is what's required. They do go through periodic purging of those files. They started that practice in 2006, and I've asked Mr. Dodik to, to provide a little bit more history as it relates to that, so I'll be bringing that forward a little bit later. Also, as it relates to public records, in this particular school district, we do quite a bit of business when compared to some of our comparable districts. I've asked Amity to look at other districts and, and compare, and she's in the process of doing that. But just to, to give you some examples, you know, some of our comparables, like Brevard's, well, let's start with us. Since July 1, approximately 476 requests from 318 requesters is what this school district has done. If you look at Miami-Dade, and you take out their, Miami-Dade has a police force that gets a lot of public information requests. If you take out the public information requests for the police force, we actually exceed the number of public information requests that Miami-Dade receives. Collier County's like 200, Manatees 354, Marion's 81, Orange County's 467. So Orange, which is a much larger district, has less public records. Pasco, 30, Polk, 294. And again, we're 476. Part of the reason is, is we obviously want to be responsive, and making sure that we have staffing levels and procedures appropriate for responding to public information or public records requests. So we are in the process of doing that now, looking at, because what I said when we received this information was, well, we have to go look at agencies outside of maybe our comparable districts, and look at number of transactions, and how do they handle that? Now, if you look at some entities, like the city of Cape Coral, 4,554 requests, so we're not in that category. But more along, like the city of Fort Myers. Now, the city of Fort Myers has, you know, they have a clerk of courts, and they have, you know, the properties office and so forth. But anyway, we want to look and see what their staffing levels are versus what ours are. I've also asked Mr. Dodik to get with Mr. Martin and review our procedures, to make sure that we are in compliance. And it may not be, it may be a good idea to even get a third opinion, outside opinion about that as well, so they are in the process of doing that. So I will bring that information forward when I receive it a little bit more comprehensive manner. Something else that I asked Dr. Pruitt to do was take a look at our administrative staffing levels, because I remember this came up, there were some board members, a number of years ago, that used to criticize our staffing levels as it relates to the ratio per student. If you look at Florida, and this you can get on the DOE website, but 227 students per all administrators, you know, so one administrator per 227 students, or 944 students per one school-based administrator is what Florida's average is. Now, if you go and look at Lee County's reported average, we look like we're close, but a little bit, a little bit high, like instead of one for every 227 students, we're one for every 220 students. However, you have to remember that we have a larger proportion of charter schools than other districts around the state of Florida. So take out charter schools, now look at us. So now, the ratio goes one administrator for every 232 students, so we have, you know, slightly more students per administrator than what the state average is, whereas Lee Charter Schools would have one administrator for every 156 students. So their average would be, you know, they have more administrators per student than, than what our district does. So if you look at, if you look at it that way, and remembering that we're charter-heavy compared to most of Florida, but if you look at just our traditional system, we actually have less administrators, you know, per capita, if you look at per number of students, than, than the state average. That's not a pitch to add more administrators, it's just, I just wanted to, that, that gets raised as an issue on occasion, and I just thought I would bring that up. We have Mr. Law with us, William Law. He's in the audience, Assistant Superintendent Operations. Mark Mora is thrilled, as am I. He's already busy at work, and, and we, again, we are glad that he is here. He is, he is, of course, again, over operations, so transportation is probably the first order of business, but he's also being brought up to speed as it relates to LLL, facilities, maintenance. He is also involved in student assignment, planning growth and capacity. He's also working with student, or safety and security, and a lot of other areas as well. So he is, Mr.- So, he is, Mr. Martin over here has graciously allowed us into the Law office, so Mr. Law is in the former Law Library, so, which I think is very appropriate. Couple pla, just to give you an idea of some of the places that I've been and some people I've been meeting with, I did meet with the Alliance for Educational Leaders, which is, of course, Pat Riley, and their good presentation from Collier County, their involvement with Sarah Owens and, and other charitable organizations across our community. And so, I've got, Dr. Carlin is meeting with, and also, I've got Amity involved in that as well, but meeting with Tess, and, and hopefully also Sarah Owens. What they do in Collier is they have these community agencies deployed in committees that support their strategic plan, and they actually work to try to find resources, funding, et cetera, to support Collier's strategic plan. Sarah Owens is deployed to do that for us in Lee County. They just need a contact, and Dr. Carlin has graciously agreed to do that, and they said specifically, we don't, it was suggested would not, although communications director is, is where most districts go, communications person is extremely busy, and you wanna give it the time that it needs, so they're suggesting another resource, and so that's one of the reasons, not that we don't have Dr. Carlin very busy, we do with accreditation, et cetera, et cetera, but she's stepping up to do that for us, so we appreciate that. Did meet with Cindy McCleary-Ross of the News Press last Friday. Will be meeting with Tom Hayden of the News Press hopefully this week to just work on that relationship and, and make sure we have a, you know, open dialogue, which I think is always good with our media outlets. Daryl Adams of NBC came in and met with me also last Friday, and these are good, good conversations, and met with the editor of Fox as well, so. And a lot of them, they have kids in our school district, which is really, which is really pretty cool, I think. Did travel out last week to Cape Coral Technical College and met with Mr. McCormick and, and also Brian Mangan, and we talked about, you know, future plans for both of those technical colleges, also Todd Everly, Everly, and he, you know, so we're looking at expanding Cape Coral Technical College and also Fort Myers Technical College. Lot of opportunity there, so we're pretty excited about that as well. Had a, did give a, a speech to the Fort Myers Chamber of Commerce last week, and I think that was well-received. They are, were extremely supportive. They watched the Not Just a Grade video, and I think that was pretty powerful for that group, so, again, hats off to Amity and her crew for putting that together. Also met, or went out to Heights Elementary last Friday. They made me an honorary watchdog. That was really cool. Yeah, yeah, that was, that was quite an honor, and I got to tour the school, but it was really neat to roll up on that campus and see all those guys in those, in those yellow shirts and, you know, doing parent pickup, and working in the cafeteria, and tutoring, and all that stuff. They've really got a fantastic program, and they have, of course, helped spread that across the district, so that was pretty, pretty cool. Last thing I do wanna mention, you know, it was, is brought up by Ms. Fisher. I appreciate you not only being there, but, but bringing it up for the, the conference call with the principals, and also Ms. Love-Riviere. Or what happened was, they graciously gave up, although I didn't ask, but they graciously gave up a little bit of their meeting time to attend that, but I hope it was well worth the time, and that was, what we did was, we wanted to make sure our teachers and administrators were really all on the same page as it, as we look at, you know, testing and assessment moving forward, because we're getting into that season. So, really, our, our desire to reduce formal testing and spend more time in teaching and learning, I sent them some research, talked about it. Also, we talked about different types of assessment, and a need came up for training for our teachers in terms of, of improving assessment and evaluation techniques in the classroom, using other things besides just, you know, the traditional quizzes and so forth. The principals were asked for that, and I thought that was a really great idea. Some other changes that you should be aware, you know, the 30% comes up at the elementary level, and for next year, that 30% requirement is going away. That's a decision that the principals, and that is at 30% of that grade at the end of the year. This year, they, they were reluctant to move totally away from that. If you'd asked me, I would have, and they kind of said, "No, wait on, we wanna make this, we wanna make a thoughtful decision here." So, what they did, they, I will credit our principals, they went back, and we looked at the scale, and Soretta, and Richard Itzen, and they adjusted that scale so that it is not punitive to, to our students. The concern that we have here, and trying to explain this in a short period of time, but we wanna make sure that students are receiving a grade in the classroom, and then coming across an assessment, and not being negatively penalized because, you know, because it may be this instruction wasn't aligned with the standards that are being taught. So, we need to work on better alignment, but in the meantime, not penalize the students. And so, they've adjusted the scale to the appropriate level of rigor, and so that's to the student's best interest, and we think that's the fairest solution moving forward. So, that's one of the things that we talked about, and I don't know, Shannon, if I said that the way I should've, but, okay, very good. We did talk about academic plans. We also talked about the PLC guidelines and the fact that we have got our, our collaborative commu, committee working with, you know, working with our teacher leaders, our school development executives, and some of our principal reps to put together really good guidelines for PLCs, including in some cases, not even having a PLC assigned to a teacher where it may not be relevant. So, that gives us flexibility to use them where they're working well, and to work on ones that need to be improved, but also eliminate ones that are, are wasting people's time, 'cause that's the last thing we want to do. And then last thing, and I appreciate the, the board's support on this, because certainly we could not do this without your support, and also our associations, but our commitment to giving teachers planning back during the instructional day. So, we have, we have the committee working on that, but we've been working with Dr. Desmore's in making sure that we have resources available to staff schools so we can make that a reality. That, again, was a commitment made years ago, and a couple of you were on the board at that time, and now it's, it's, we're able to honor that commitment, and so I'm glad to be a part of that, and I appreciate everybody's support to make that happen. So, that's all I have for today.
Great.
Thank you. Listen, thank you for that. Okay. Seeing no other business come before this board, we will adjourn this meeting at 4:54 PM. We'll return at 5:45 for a student performance, and the action meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you all.